Okay, good evening. Today is February 23rd, 2017. This is the meeting of the Hyde Park Board of Education. We're at the Havlin Middle School. Can I have a motion to enter executive session? Oh, I'm sorry. First, we have to have a motion to appoint Joanne Mikkula? Is that who you're about?
Mikkula.
Mikkula, okay. As district clerk for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year. You have a motion for that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Now, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to CSA grievance, HPTA MOA, and personnel items?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. We're learning here.
I'm just getting in the wrong spot. I don't know. Just helping figure out a reason.
Well, we're waiting to just get ready. It's always nice when we see a nice crowd and everybody's here. We appreciate you being here. It's really a... It's a nice thing to have more than three people or four people here. So, we really appreciate your coming out. And as soon as Gurr gets back, we will... Oh, can you start? Okay. At this time, may I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you very much. Let me get back up here. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is up there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we have one slight adjustment, a modification to the agenda. We are going to have the athletic and the budget presentation switch so that it will... Instead of those 7.3, we'll come after 7.4. So, we're just going to switch those. All right, with those in mind, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda as modified?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. That brings us to Pride. And we always start with James, our prideful member.
We have quite a bit. We have a few students who were... Who showed some great excellence amongst their peers. We had one student, Peter Reinhardt, who was selected to go to a leadership conference in Washington DC. And he was one of 250 across the country to be selected for this week-long event, studying the environment and understanding it. And this conference was designed to develop leaders in the significant field of environmental studies. So, it's pretty awesome that he's going to be looking into that. We have a Boy Scout who's a junior. His name's Ian Cooper. And he's working towards his Eagle Scout Award, which is the highest rank in the Boy Scouts. His project is planning to benefit the district in that he will be building like a little sports shed for North Park. This shed has the purpose of storing toys and exercise equipment for the students' recess time. And he also hopes that it will encourage more active lifestyles amongst the students. And another student that we have, Cosette Vander-Vider-Scheff, was one out of 100 students selected across the country as well for a Disney Dreamers Academy. This academy is a four-day event, which brings each student to the Disney World in Orlando, Florida, to participate in workshops and develop leadership skills and to also enjoy a good time. The event will hope to inspire students to reach their dreams and to introduce a world of possibilities, while also preparing them for the future with skills such as networking. And I think it's so great that we have so many students with so many different skills that have the opportunities to expand on them. It's pretty awesome. So, our sports teams, our cheerleading team, won their Section 9 championship and will be competing for state championship in Syracuse. Our boys swimming did pretty well this entire season, considering they only had eight athletes on the team. Rep Burns and Robert Reining will be competing at the Nassau Aquatic Center in Long Island. And for our gymnastics team, Danica Bolitho, Shannon Kelly, and Clara Penn will be competing in Cold Spring Harbor, which is also in Long Island. And for our bowling, Derek Storm, Ryan Paget, Austin Trainor, Megan Sire, Natalie Calazo, and Lindsay Holland will also be competing, I believe, this weekend. And for our track, we have two possible athletes to make the state meet this coming Friday. And the qualifiers is tomorrow. Our boys and girls basketball teams both had superb seasons, fortunately ending this past couple of days. Our girls basketball team won their senior night with a score of 62 to 35, which is about two weeks ago. And the record as of now is eight and three, eight wins and three losses within the league. And within the division, they were 6-0. And our boys team has a total record of four wins and four losses, which is better than I've heard in the past four years, I think. And our boys and girls indoor track teams both won Mahals. And yeah, and so we have two Section 9 teams competing this weekend, in gymnastics and in cheerleading. So, congratulations to all the athletes that have had such a great season.
That's it? That's all you got? Oh, okay. Good. Thanks, James.
Yeah.
Anybody else who's proud? I'd like to just say, I really enjoyed the band, the Pops Band concert that was here at Havlin. It was an excellent night. I thought the performers did excellent work. And I also highly recommend repeating having the students sit in the audience and watch their peers play. It was a good thing. So, enough about that. Anybody else? Anything else?
Well, just an update. The Mahal semifinals were played over the last few days, and unfortunately, both the girls and boys lost. The girls by one, the boys by three. And two of the most competitive games I've seen in the last decade. The score never separated, the two teams never separated by more than four points for the entire game. And in fact, if anybody saw the results of the Syracuse game, we almost pulled the same thing they did. We had a shot go off. Four seconds to get the ball a length of the court and take a shot, and the ball caromed off the rim. It would have tied the game and go into overtime. So, it was a real exciting thing. Now, I understand that if things hasn't changed, we'll be hosting first-round competition and sectionals for both the boys and girls varsity basketball teams next Tuesday. The girls playing first and the boys playing after them. This is the... This will be the final go-round for the basketball teams. The Mahals are independent. They're competing league for the year. And then the sectionals are when we get all of the leagues for all of the regional areas competing against each other as a path to the state. So, there should be two exciting games on Tuesday. And like they do at Maris, we'd really like to pack the house.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else? You have any other...
I just have a couple. I'll go quickly, not to diminish them, but this is... We have a lot of pride, and we have some formal pride that's coming up. The Acapella Invitational was extraordinary. We had four other school districts come down. It's an invitational. It's a... It was just a really great event. The students, not only from the other four districts, came and were part of the Acapella Invitational, but they had a day-long workshop with music instructors from Vassar. So, they got to spend the whole day together. The Music Booster parents also provided them dinner. So, they got workshops during the day, a dinner together, and then they had their Acapella Invitational at night. The Claudio Cares ribbon-cutting ceremony for the computer lab dedicated to Claudio was really well-attended. A lot of adults, but a lot of students, a lot of students there. And so, that was a... We have a picture on the website. As some of you know, the Claudio Cares Foundation donated $22,000 to upgrade a computer lab at the high school. Neil Tompkins signed a Division One full scholarship ride to Connecticut. And that was the most well...
Eastern Connecticut.
Eastern Connecticut. It was, again, for college signing, it was the most well-attended. This week is all of our Science Fairs and Discover E Week, so a lot of engineering going on, K through 8. And one other announcement, as you know, James is our second student board member. Our student board member from last year was Garrett Burnett. He went off to the University of Delaware. He... It was his dream to go to West Point. He reapplied and was accepted to West Point. So, Garrett Burnett is going to West Point next year. So, I asked his mom if it was okay, if I announced it. She said yes. So, congratulations to Garrett. And one of our teachers was named Teacher of the Month, Sarah Zayer, from Ralph R. Smith. The student Carter Bernhard nominated her. So, that was the longest pride we've done in a long time.
Yeah, absolutely true.
And it's not finished.
And it's a good thing. Moving on to the regional scholarship art award winners.
Yeah. And if Melinda could come up to the podium as well, Melinda DiMayo, our Director of Fine and Performing Arts, join Doug and I, and then Melinda can invite the students up and Doug and I will have...
Sure.
Anybody?
Do we have them here?
We have one.
Yeah, good, good. Well, I know Abby's here.
Oh, Abby.
Oh, that podium. Oh.
So, the Schoolastic Art Awards are the longest-running and a highly prestigious award for excellence in visual art and writing. We had a number of students submit entries for the visual arts, and we have several Gold Key winners, as well as a good number of Silver winners. So, I will read, or you may read.
Yeah, if you could call them up if they're here.
Okay.
And I'll turn them out. I see Abby, yeah.
Yep. So, Daniel Amato, Gold Key winner. Abby Cummings. Come, come. Silver Key winner. Let's see if there's a gold in there, too. Mm-hmm. Here you go. Congratulations. Rachel, Rachel and Tractor, Silver Key. A Gold Key for Kathryn, Kathryn Gray. Come on down, Kathryn. Congratulations. Yep. Yes, we can. Yes. William Moss, a Gold Key. Tig O'Halleran, Silver Key. Gold Key, Emily Outwater. Liz Phillips, Silver Key. And a Gold Key for Liz Phillips as well. Congratulations to everyone for your hard work.
Okay. And that brings us to the Boces Distinguished Student Award.
Yeah, so I would like to ask Doug Damiani, Principal, to come up to the podium. I'd also like to recognize that Dr. Richard Houli, the District Superintendent of Duchess Boces, is with us as just to celebrate the success of this new program. So, Doug, take it over.
Oh, thank you.
Or Mr. Damiani, you have students here.
All right. Superintendent Rycheck and Hyde Park Board, thanks for having us tonight. I'm proud to represent the Boces, Duchess Boces here, and offer this presentation to one of our students who is from your district and attending in our program. And this student's name is Merrick Pendergast. And I just have a statement here that, from his teacher, that I will read about Merrick and then have him come up and offer him the certificate. Merrick is a kind, polite, pleasant young man who is eager to please. He came to the Academics Behavior Community Program at Salt Point Center two years ago. We encouraged Merrick and celebrated his accomplishments. Merrick has grown in learning, character, and depth of understanding in the program. In his academics, Merrick is dedicated and passionate, enthusiastic, cheerful, and a pleasure to work with. Merrick loves to share his excitement for learning and talents with others. Merrick is often the student others seek out for some honest advice or a simple hug to make them feel better. And we believe Merrick has the ability and the drive to do great things in his life and will exceed everyone's expectations. So, congratulations, Merrick. Please come up and receive... Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And I'd like to point out, the boy's a reader. I love people that read. Look at that book. Good going. Keep it up. Okay, we have a short video, right? For Black History Month, 6.4. Who's going to run that? You... Bobby. Okay.
What are you looking for? What are the qualities you're looking for in your new principal? We will use the survey results to help customize our interview questions so that we're finding a good match between what the community and the staff say they are looking for and what we're asking of the candidates. We also feel that being able to hand a brand-new principal, the results from a survey from both staff and families will give them a really pretty good roadmap for coming in and knowing what is important to the community versus trying to figure it out all on their own, or, you know, maybe it's just a tool, but it should... We're hoping it's a helpful tool.
Okay. Any doubt?
That's it.
That's it? Well, that brings us to why we're here, the Havlin Middle School Report. Eric?
And while Eric's coming up there, we'll just warn everybody, he does not sound like Eric. Also, Havlin Middle School received some...
That might be a good thing. What do you sound like?
Received some excellent press on the Avid program, which I know he'll mention, but they got a nice full-page spread in the Gipsy Journal. I see Sue Ceruley here. She got on the front page.
Well, thank you very much. If you're the students, they say I sound like Batman. That could not be a bad thing. So, I just want to welcome you guys to Havlin Middle School. We've talked a lot about pride, and I think a lot about that as I come to work every day, as beaming with pride to be a part of the Havlin community and be the Havlin Middle School Principal. Our district mission statement, which we've adopted here in the building, which is the hyperessential school district, empowers our community to strive for excellence and embrace the opportunities of our globally-connected world. It's things we work on every day. We talk about our faculty meetings, we talk about our department meetings, our teams of teachers work on it. And as you guys may know, I'll talk a little bit about our one-to-one initiative in terms of really making us that globally-connected partners in the world. That's a little bit fast. So, recent pride for us. First and foremost, we are here for academics, and that makes me very happy to report that when I started here four years ago, I inherited a school that was on a focus school list. And that was a challenge in a lot of ways, but we have a fantastic Havlin faculty and staff and a Havlin administrative team, along with our collaboration with our district administrators, that we start this school year as a school in good standing, so we're very proud of that. We also went into our third annual Havlin Middle School Community Night. If you haven't had an opportunity to come out for one of those, they're wonderful events. They're very well-attended. It comes with high-interest workshops, booths for people, as well as a meal. And all the time and supplies are, for the most part, donated by people in our community, businesses in our community. And the workshops are put on by our faculty and staff and our district directors and people like that. So, we're very happy about that.
Right. It should be a blueprint for every school in Duchess County. It really is effective. It's a wonderful night.
Thank you very much. We also have extended day programs that we've been working on the last four years. I'll talk more about that as we go on. And when I was writing this presentation, we had just finished the heels of the Winter Concert Series. And tonight, we talked about the Pops Show that happened just last week. And I think about the DCMEA Junior High All-County Festival that happened last month. That was a very exciting time. We had lots of students perform, both choral and instrumental. And also, just a plug for our district strings festival that's coming up next month as well. And our Havlin Middle School Athletics, a lot of those athletic things that were talked about earlier by James, some of those are Havlin Middle School students participating on junior varsity and varsity sports also. And not to be left to last, but it is a big deal here as our one-to-one initiative. As you guys may be aware, we've rolled out one-to-one devices in the form of Chromebooks to every student to take home every night, to engage academics, again, to be part of that globally-connected world. And that is just, is revolutionizing the way we do instruction, the way students are learning. And I will have a more detailed presentation right at the end of mine from Ms. Gould, one of our math teachers here, who's really sort of going to walk you through some of the things that students see in the classroom every day. And then we do have a couple of students here who are going to be willing to talk a little bit about how maybe learning is being transformed from their perspective as well. So, aside from all the general academic programs you'd expect at the middle level, we also offer an Info Fluency Class at the sixth-grade level, so a lot around library, research skills, introductory to writing and things like that. We offer world languages in the form of French and Spanish, where students can leave here with a high school credit for that. Our Life and Workforce Skills, Laws, some might know it as Home and Career or Family Consumer Science. When I went to school here, it was HOMEC, but that's the program that they're doing there. Our Avid program, which is Advancement via Individual Determination. It's an opportunity for students now, this year, we've been moving backwards every year. So, we... Three years ago, we were in eighth grade, last year, seventh. Now, it's six through eight, where it gives students an opportunity to be exposed to post-secondary outcomes, college and career readiness, job opportunity ideas, college workshops. We do a lot of field trips to local colleges, universities. We're heading out to the Troop K barracks in a very short time. And it's a great opportunity for students in that area, but also gives students who would maybe not regularly be recognized as an opportunity for moving into those advanced-level courses as they move into their high school careers and into their high school careers. We also offer Accelerated Honors and Regions classes here in both grades seven and eight. Our technology class in our eighth grade, we have a studio art class, which is eligible for students to earn a high school credit for as well. And we have a strong academic intervention service to also support students who need to close that skill gap. So, I'm going to walk you through two slides. There's going to be four graphs total, but I just want to point you out, this is about our... I asked our faculty and staff to sort of do a quick Google Form survey about how we're using this new technology in the classroom. And there's some general ideas. I wanted to get sort of a check on that as well. And before I go into the slides, I just need to show... And before I go into the slides, I just need to share that last part, data based on 70 teacher responses. When I was doing that, within about a day and a half, 70 teachers logged on and expressed all the work that they're doing and the enthusiasm for this initiative, which is, it is an initiative, but it's what we do. It is part of our work every day and students' experiences across all subject areas. And it's really exciting. So just in general, you know, we see these flat panel screens here, these interactive devices, that's in every classroom. And we just, you can walk through the slide in terms of percentage of people who use it every day versus half the time. Most of this is based on a six-day cycle, so it's not necessarily a Monday through Friday, but some of the graphs work out that way. And then on this, the second one is in-class Chromebook use. I still talk about, are we using whole groups, small group, individual? The concept of a flipped classroom, our kids can look at and watch the video as part of homework and then come in ready for discussion in class, so it saves some of the classroom experience time as well. We continue on with, you know, percentage of teachers that are assigning homework using a Chromebook. You know, we're growing in that. We also need to be mindful of student access at home and things like that as well. But we do have a fair number of teachers doing that. And then of those, the frequency. And you can see that the majority of them are really tick around the one to two days a week area to really get kids exposed to how we do it, what it looks like, how do we collaborate using Google Docs and things like that as an opportunity for learning in a different way. Instead of having everyone have to meet at the library after school to work on the research project, you can work at it in different areas and just collaborate in the same space online. Your BLT is hard at work. You know, our work for our BLT in our last three years.
BLT?
Oh yes, BLT, our Building Level Team. Our work at our BLT for the last three years has been centered on really working to engage the concept of our focus status, our focus school status, and working on those commitments to sort of improve instruction, improve student experience, improve student engagement, and community involvement. And we're going to continue our work with our community. We're going to continue our work with the BLT, who are the organizers and runners of the community nights. We're going to be looking at reviewing the different types of writing rubrics that are out there. There's always been a longstanding Havlin writing rubric. Of course, with the advent of the Common Core, there's Common Core writing rubric expectations too. But we're going to look to centralize those so the experience is similar for all students, grade 6, 7, and 8, and regardless of what team you might be on. And also, we're always looking for, finding opportunities to continue our positive culture building in our building. It is a wonderful, wonderful place to be. It's a wonderful place to work. And we always want to not just rest on that, we always want to sort of how to capture that, how do we build on that and continue to grow. And the final, the last piece, we were just recently working on is the concept of creating a student voice Google Classroom. Google Classroom is like a virtual classroom setting where we can get quick and easy feedback from students. I'm often looking for students' feedback on, I do quotes of the week, quotes of the day during Black History Month. Or something as simple as, hey, 8th graders, we need to know what your theme for your school dance is going to be at the end of the year. Can you respond to that? So it's a way for us to get information out and get information from our student body in a very fast way. So that's another part that we're working on in terms of student input and decision-making. And again, that's a carryover from the focus review work, but we sort of pick apart the stuff that's really important and say, that is partly why we are where we are. So we want to continue that work regardless of the status. So our extended day activities, I said, we talk about that a little bit longer. You know, we've been running the Healthy Kids Literacy Program. It's a grant program that comes to our building after school every day. They do three sessions that run seven weeks, Monday through Friday, and it's three hours a day from 3:00 to 6:00. It makes it a long day for students. And we were happy to find out, although partly they were here because of our focus school status, but they were able to continue the grant even though we are in good standing. So they're here this year, and really their goal is to work on moving students' literacy abilities one grade level during that time. And over the longitudinal period of the four years, they've been hitting right about 80% out of that program. And I'm really always excited to say that, for the most part, our reading teachers, if not in the building, in the district, are literacy instructors for that as well. So it's always a wonderful continuity for us there. We started this year through the work, Mary Ann Silky, one of the assistant principals, partnered with Dutchess Community College to start a student mentoring program. We've identified some students as part of our PBIS, which I'll talk about, our Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Program, to look at, all students can access it. All students have an opportunity to earn a gotcha. All students have an opportunity to learn how to perform in no matter what space you are, whether it's the classroom, the hallway, the auditorium, the library, the bathroom, the bus. But then some students, they need more support. So these are sort of tier-two activities that we do, the next-level support for a small percentage of students. We've been marrying them up with college students that are going into the field of social work or psychology. And we just did our first semester, and I actually have a bunch of those college students coming over tomorrow with a professor for me to give a tour of the building as we have our second crop coming. And our other extended day program, we've been working on now for four years, it just affects, I call it the Maris Tutoring Program. We've partnered with Maris College for the last four years. And we bring in about 20 apprentice teachers, they're like in their second or third year, learning how to be teachers. It's part of one of their theory and practice courses where the professor comes with them. They work on different theories and skills with our students after school on Wednesdays in either ELA and math. We've also been fortunate enough to have a couple of language students, whether it be French or Spanish, that also have helped our students, but they come in and they get tutored. It's more than homework help, because these apprentice teachers want to engage the classroom teacher to know exactly what's happening and to work in the classroom and then build those skills. That's been a wonderful success. One of our retired teachers from the district, Susan Decker, is the contact person for that program. And I say 15, but we just added, as of this Wednesday, four more. We're up to 19 tutors that come one day a week. It runs through the whole college semester minus, of course, spring break. And they come and work with their kids. We have about 40 students in that program now. It's grown. The first year we did this, it was three tutors and it was about 12 kids. So we're really proud of that. And we have, of course, our official clubs. We've been able and very fortunate with the support of the board and the budget to grow our experiences for students after school every year. But we have our Drama Club, and I'll put our shameless plug in for the Shrek the Musical Junior, which will be doing this spring, right after our spring break. We have Ecology Club, Yearbook Club. It's so well-attended that our Yearbook Club advisor actually breaks it down by grade. Otherwise, like, we have like 75 students, so she has like 25 and 6, 25 and 7, 25 and 8. That's done by Ms. Rizuska, who is just a wonderful person here in our building. Our Student Council, Bowling Club, Writing Club. And offshoot, the Writing Club became a Havlin Hawkeye newspaper. This is the second year of publishing the Havlin Hawkeye. And also, thanks to the board, our Ski and Snowboarding Club, which started up last year and is going strong this year, because we've had some snow. So we're pretty excited about that. And we have continued the tradition of the intramural sports, which is done gender-specific, boys and girls. And it runs both in the fall and again in the spring. They do various activities based on the interests of students who sign up. So in terms of character education, we have a lot of things going on here. It took, I'm sorry, as we do more, the writing gets smaller, because I want to sort of express to you guys exactly what we're doing. We're in our second year of our PBIS Scholarship Program. Again, our PBIS is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And our acronym that's tied to that is RISE ABOVE. We like to teach our students to learn to be respectful, be inspired, be safe, and excel at all times. And we hear that wherever we go and whatever we do in all areas. And they've been able to do scholarships programs that are money raised through fundraising. It's not something that comes out of the budget. It's flower sales at the spring and winter concerts. It's cookie walks. It's all those other things that they do to fundraise. And we were able to give five students $200 scholarships towards things they want to, whether it's to help to offset the cost of a Washington DC trip, or I really want to play this sport or be in this club. And there's a financial cross-ex, I have to buy equipment. They can use it for whatever really they want to do to support them here. We've always have partnered with our Havlin Middle School PTA, which is very strong and wonderful. And they brought us Dr. Michael Fallon, who identifies himself as a psychologist, a poet, an entertainer, an actor. And he has a mantra of "You are beautiful." It talks about celebrating the differences and diversity in our building. We partner with our, with Dutchess County Cape Council for Alcohol Prevention and Education. And our Cape Counselor is Regina Hernandez, who is not only here every other day, but her opposite day, she's up at the high school doing wonderful things there. And she's helped bring things like the Ally Club here, the Reality Check Pledge, No Name Calling Week, Red Ribbon Week. There's lots of other things I didn't include in here that you might think, yeah, Havlin Middle School does that as well. Our student government, in terms of Spirit Week, they did a very large food drive. They always do a large food drive for the Hyde Park Food Pantry, which gets delivered right before the Thanksgiving holiday begins. And it's a very big deal. And we have lots of students who come and help participate in delivering that food and help organize all the homerooms and classrooms to make sure that we have a very successful drive. I would eventually say probably almost 1,000 pounds of food was donated from our Hyde Park families. We're also doing our Valentine's for troops. We've extended that this year. That's an opportunity for kids to come in and do donations that will get sent to our troops that are overseas. We actually had a Staff Sergeant, Chris Peterson, from the United States Marine Corps, on our morning analysis this morning, thanking folks for what they do. And so really giving the impression of the impact, so the end result, the user result of that. And hopefully, we can be able to continue that and have a strong shrunk for that as well. We have Adopt a Family for the holidays. Havlin Middle School's staff adopted three families and made their holiday season a little bit better. Haiti fundraiser, Andrea Welty, our French teacher, did a fundraiser for Haiti after the weather events this past fall, where they just did like a coin drop in the cafeteria. And they were able to raise $420, which was donated to Haiti to help with rural school rebuilding. So it's pretty exciting for us. And the other thing that I didn't list on here, but it was something new, we did a breakfast for our E&amp;L students for a collaboration, get them become a larger part of our school community. We'll continue to do that with other events for them as well. Last piece I want to talk about is our parent and community involvement, because success doesn't happen without them. And just again, a thank you to our PTA, who are truly essential partners. They sponsor our grade-level activities, Scholastic book drives, our honor roll breakfast, which we're currently in our cycle for. This week, we had our 6th grade honor roll breakfast. We have our 7th grade honor roll breakfast today. Tomorrow will be the 8th grade honor roll breakfast, almost 400 students participating and celebrating academic achievement, which is a really exciting thing. We have our dances, the middle school dances still exist, probably a lot, like you remember, and more. It's not just dance, it's fun, it's activities. We have one this Friday night, our Winter Dance, our 8th grade picnic at the end of the year. All of our Moving Up Day activities and celebrations are really sponsored and put on by our Havlin Middle School PTA. And of course, our partnerships with the community and our School Resource Officer Program, Dutchess County Cape, DCC, Maris College, and Teen Center, which has been a longstanding event here in this district. I think Diane Cullen, who's part of the Hyde Park Recs, told me about 21 years. And they do four, or six, six Friday nights during the year where kids come in for a free event, whether it's games, it's activities, and it's just something for them to do here together. And finally, the Havlin Middle School Community Room is open for its second year. It's an opportunity and a place for our families to come in and use resources in our building. It could be a hub of communication. It could be, you know, I'm in for a meeting and I have 10 minutes early and I just want to sit and read the newspaper before I go into the meeting or take notes, whatever the case is. But it's an opportunity for our parents and families to use our resources here in the building at any point they want my school's open. And that covers that portion of it. I don't know if you want to do questions now, but Ms. Gould is going to do a presentation about the classroom, sort of the user end of Chromebooks, or you want to wait till after that?
Let's just see if anybody has any questions. I don't, I think we can just continue on and-
Okay, we'll do that. I'll invite Ms. Gould, one of our 8th grade math teachers.
Eric, while she's making her way to the front, I did have one quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the graphs talked about how much homework teachers were assigning. And I believe it was linked to how much Chromebook homework they were signing. I suspect that one of the obstacles to that is internet connectivity at home. Can you comment on that? Do you have a feel for how many students are impacted by that?
Yes, Steve, I wonder about that often, because I have not heard much feedback from our family community about that being a challenge. Although I got to imagine with just under 50% of students requiring free reduced lunch, that must exist. I haven't heard much about that, but we've been exploring ways of trying to find ways to open our library in the afternoons, three days a week, so they can work there, allowing permitting use during lunchtime, that sort of thing, to offset those experiences. And of course, during study halls, but there are not as many as you might think. So I haven't heard that much. I do want to partner a little bit with Mr. Wirt, our tech director, to see if we can get our finger on the pulse of that. Because I think as we move more in that direction and get deeper, that is probably going to become a challenge for some students. And I never want that to be something that would impact them by way of grades, so.
I can speak to if you could, as I was-
Okay, go ahead.
I'm jumping in a little early. I can speak to that a little bit as well within my classroom. What's wonderful about the Chromebooks that we've purchased is that when you bring them home, you can work offline. So what we can do in class is students can download whatever they need and then work on that offline when they're home.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there are ways to circumvent it.
Definitely, and we're getting very creative with trying to figure out some other ways too. But yeah, awesome. So I want to start by saying thank you for having me and some of my wonderful students here. And thank you for the fact that you've brought those Chromebooks to us. You're very instrumental in that, so thank you. I could honestly go on for about an hour a day, a whole year, but yeah, I'm not going to do that to you.
How many slides did you originally have, Tony?
Well, originally, you didn't say originally. I could go on forever. So I cut it down as much as I could. There's so much, so I'm going to give you just the highlights. But it is going to be through the framework of the SAMR model. And so that is basically the different levels that we use technology within our class and how students engage with it. So you will see those pieces up here, substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition, and how that changes the task. So I want to begin with a couple of things that we've done before. We had Chromebooks on my team. We have a homework hotline, which was traditionally done through the phone. Now we're able to use a live Google Doc, which is something that we can update throughout the day. We can also hyperlink various homework assignments to it. So I don't know if this has a little laser on, but you can see the blue font there. On the right is my class website, which is now done through Google Sites. I do similar things with my do-now, as well as my class materials. So what's really great about that is that we'll have students who might be homesick, or I have a student, actually I have two students going to a state meet, a varsity state meet right now, which is kind of amazing. And so they're going to be away, but they're still going to be in touch with what we're doing in class, because they're able to go on that website and take whatever we're doing in class, and it is there. So sometimes I'll have students that are homesick and come back totally up to speed, which is kind of amazing. All right. In terms of the student work and feedback, we're able to provide instantaneous feedback on quizzes and student work. Student work is accessible from anywhere. So I could be on a lunch or a prep, and I could be providing that feedback. And a student could go home to do that homework, and they could see that updated feedback. So having that instantaneous connection has been really helpful. For me, being in math, we're able to use some other resources, such as Desmos here, where I'm able to see snapshots of student work right in the moment. So I have a dashboard where I can see all of my students and what they're working on. I'm able to look at specific students individually, and I can work with them if they need help. Or if I'm seeing a common misconception through everyone, I'm able to address that, which is something that really revolutionized is what we're able to do in the classroom, because you can only see one sheet at a time when you're not looking at a screen like this. We can provide extra resources and reminders. So I gave an example of, on the left are some videos that I posted over the weekend in case a student was struggling with their homework. They could view those if they have access. And the middle is a video of Havlin Middle School students laying the wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, which this year, the 8th graders had to actually write essays in order to earn that space to lay the wreath this year. So seeing that inspired a lot of students to write essays. You can also provide little reminders here and there about when essays are due, because sometimes you say it in class, and I don't know, you're grabbing the pencil that fell off your desk and you didn't hear it. So those can be pretty helpful. Another way that I've used it is live data collection. So in my algebra class, within our statistics unit, students had to come in with a question that they wanted to research. And to collect that data, we did it really quickly using a Google Sheet. And so the students were able to collect that data quickly and also bring it home with them. When you think about previously, you might have had a handout and students had to go and meet with each one. You start those conversations, get sidetracked. This makes it both efficient and effective. So students could take that home. And I actually had one student who, I think that student might be here, and she might have forgot to fill in one box, and another student put a little alert and was like, "Hey, can you fill this in?" And then she did. So it's kind of cool in that way, too. In terms of differentiated instruction, again, I could go on forever. But in a professional development opportunity that we had here, a fellow teacher, Christine Murphy, showed us EdPuzzle, which we've been using a lot in a lot of different classes. We use it primarily for guided notes and for formative assessment. So in this moving picture over here, you see a student using it to take guided notes. What's tremendous is that we can use YouTube videos or videos that we've created, and students are able to go through, pause, rewind, and review that. And we're able to insert different comments as well as formative assessment questions. So here's an example of a situation where I said, "What's the absolute value of negative 5 over 4?" That's something that should be prior knowledge, but if they don't have that prior knowledge, and it says, if you don't, you know, if you don't get it correct, they have to come see me. So I'm able to correct that, so it doesn't get in the way of- So I'm able to correct that, so it doesn't get in the way of them being successful in that situation. Here's an example of a video that we've used with guided notes. We can put little reminders for them to take the notes. Note taking is definitely a skill that we need to teach students, and especially in this digital age where they're going to be learning a lot from videos, we can kind of help that here. This is another example of one of those multiple choice questions that we can ask. We can also take short response and we get all of that data. We've used it for simulations in my algebra class. We used it to basically discover and create a deeper understanding for function transformations. In science, I know they've done it for photosynthesis in enzyme labs. And within my class, we've also used them for sequences of transformations. So this is actually the student's work where they showed the three different transformations that they did. Normally I would get that last picture, but now I can actually see their thinking throughout the whole process, which is pretty cool. But I think my favorite part is absolutely showing them how to master the material. So within that, I've used it in two kind of unique ways. When you think about review, you have review sessions where students come in with questions that they have, and you really have to focus on one question at a time. But using Google Slides, we're able to go through and students can post their question or whatever they're struggling on, and they could go through and respond to each other. And me during that time, I'm able to go through and monitor each of those responses and add myself. So it really takes something that could only be focusing on one thing at a time and makes it something that everyone can focus on in a lot of different ways. And here's an example of where a student actually took a video from Khan Academy, it's something that we'll use often, and placed that within there saying, hey, why don't you check out this video? This video goes over that topic as well. And the last thing that'll show up is basically our replacement for review packets. So if you think about a math class that you took, if you have a big test coming up, you might have done a review packet. In this case, now what we do is instead, students take data from their pre-assessments, prior quizzes, different assignments in class, and they target what things they need to work on. And now, instead of having to go through every single thing, they can really target what they need to work on. So this is an example for systems of equations. So we have the different methods on the left. If a student only had to work on the graphing piece, they could then go to that section and they could even within there choose if they want to go through video lessons or if they want to go through different practice problems. So they can really see if they want to start with re-instruction or if they want to go and do just practice to get stronger at that skill. And that really frees me up to be able to facilitate that learning. I can walk around and ask, answer different questions that they have and help them along the way. So students are really able to do more than just one thing now within this class, and they can really differentiate how they're reviewing. And that, again, I could go on for hours and hours and hours. But thank you for really being instrumental in us having these in our classroom. And I want to invite up two students that I brought with me. I have Kristen Vacore and Sage Armstrong, if you want to come up. They're here, they can share their experiences or answer any questions along with myself. So thank you.
Come out right behind the boy. Watch out for bites.
The Chromebooks are a very nice material to use in the classroom. We can engage with other students and sense it's a new technology. People are more engaged and working together and, you know, like working as a team. And if we have questions, we can help them answer. We have questions, they can help us answer. And it's just very nice to have in the classroom. It's a great material.
I feel like with the, oh, sorry. With the introduction of Chromebooks, it brings a whole new realm of creativity and innovativeness, both in the classroom and at home, because you can communicate with your friends instead of like having to use your phone and call them for like help on work. You can email them. You can talk with them at school. And there's still limitations to it, but it still feels very like free enveloped environment for you to like look up, to like look up answers or like to research more into like a topic that you're into. And one thing that I've noticed personally is that even with personal interests, you still feel very like enveloped while using the Chromebook, both in classroom and at home, too.
Thank you. Very good. Well spoken.
Any questions?
I have a comment. I don't remember in August when I came in to look and see the installations and there you were with your other teacher worried about what you were going to do with this new technology. I think you've figured it out.
Yeah, we've had a lot of training and a lot of time to explore, so it's been very helpful.
Great.
Just phenomenal.
Any questions here?
Yeah, actually, it's just for the students. In my daily work, I find that I'm often talking to someone as well as typing to someone else or we're sitting in a meeting and while one person is speaking, a number of the rest of us are talking about them, sometimes even talking about what they're talking about. So my, I've always tried to translate that into what it would be like to take a class in that environment. So my question becomes, how much are you able to interact with the rest of the students in your class, during class? And are the conversations about the material that's being discussed?
I feel like we communicate pretty frequently. It's still a nice balance of individuality and codependency on your friends, too. I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Yeah. I guess my question is, are you, are you using the technology to talk and work with your fellow students in the classroom? And how much of the communication is about the matter at hand versus other distractions, what you watched on TV, the game later today?
I feel like we, when we talk about the topic, it's very related at hand. It's pretty frequent, as I said, too. Like if you're working on a Google Doc, if you're working on a Google Slide, you can add like a little footnote to like the side or like a little note to the side detailing about something that you did wrong or like a suggestion. You also have access to edit the doc. You also have access to comment on the doc about certain edits. So it's very, it still feels very enveloped, too. And you can still like talk with your friends casually, but also be at the topic at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question. Is this an example of like the best that we have here or is this an average usage? Because this is pretty impressive.
I know, I mean, Eric will say what he's going to say, but I know for a fact, like I've...
Can you use the microphone so the folks at home can hear?
I'll allow Eric to take that, too. But I do have to say, I mean, looking within my view of the day, I see the eighth grade most often, I see my team most often. And things that I've shared in here are things that are happening in all of the classrooms around, I mean, everyone's got a different feel for where they are with technology. And I know everybody is going to push themselves out of their, or is pushing themselves out of their comfort zone to try new things. And you have people who, before we got Chromebooks, weren't using any technology, and now they're really moving up that SAMR model. But I'll let it...
I certainly feel compelled to say the work that Ms. Gould and her team of teachers does is phenomenal. And I would say that there is a lot of that in a lot of teams. Hers might be a little more exceptional in terms of all the teachers being on board with the work that's happening, or the majority of them. But every team of teachers has one or two out of those four core teachers that are doing this work and in other areas where they're not. Twice a week, we have, or three times a week, we have team time, but the other two days are department time. So within the department, we're collaborating so that all social studies teachers get on the same page, not just one of them. And they're sharing resources in ways that are much different than I've ever seen before. And Ms. Gould certainly is a tech leader in the building, but I would say, I'm very happy to say we have many of those at each grade level and not just in the core subject areas.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. And the students, well, we'd love you to stay if you would like, but if, you know, you want to go home and you have homework to do, feel free.
Awesome. Thank you for having us.
I was going to mention that, but I think, you'll figure it out. All right, now we're moving on to the athletic trainer proposal ahead of the budget. So Eric, you're on.
Good evening. Before I go into the athletic training proposal, I just want to give a big shout out to our winter athletes. We just had an amazing, amazing winter season. James, you stole my thunder, but you did a good job, you know, reporting on all the championships and all the kids going to the state championships. A lot of, it's just amazing to watch the kids practice every day after school and the hard work they put in. And of course, the forgotten people, the coaches, can't say enough about the coaches. They work, they work their tails off and it shows. And, you know, with all the changes going on in the department, they've embraced it. They're looking for guidance. We talk about raising the bar all the time. And I think we've got the program going in a really good direction. And today's proposal will just enhance a very good athletic program. With that said, when I came here last, last December, I was amazed that for the size of school we have and the, and the quality of a program that we have, I didn't see a full-time athletic trainer. We're in a, in a society where it's very litigious and it's very, you know, we didn't, I didn't see that full-time athletic trainer. And since, since December, I've been pursuing this with the superintendent, and I'm hoping that we can get this approved. Last, this morning, I was, first off, I was hoping with the approval of this proposal, I was going to do a partnership with Marist. And lo and behold, Mr. Michael Powers, the Director of Athletic Training Education Program at Marist, gave me a call today and he came to help support this program. And if you have specific questions regarding the actual athletic trainer, you know, he's here to answer, answer that, those questions. My experience is in 25 years as an athletic director, that's what's based, that's what I base this proposal on. In my previous school, we did the same thing. We started small with a part-time trainer and eventually we went to a full-time athletic So I have a couple of quotes here I pulled off, pulled out of Athletic Training Magazine. And the first, the first bullet here, we see that having an athletic trainer, most injuries are going to go down. Our kids are going to be cared for properly. They're not just going to go home with sprains and strains and they're going to be cared for properly. And of course, some of our contact sports, there are increased more, more injuries. Concussions, this is kind of dear, dear to my heart. You know, we have kids walking around here that probably could have been diagnosed with a concussion, but because we don't have somebody in the afternoon looking out after them, they, they're forgotten. Now we'll have an athletic trainer want to look after those kids after hours and also follow a protocol to get them back into readiness to play. The next bullet here, as you can see, every sport, cheerleading, lacrosse, volleyball, we all have injuries. And many of the, some injuries are bumps and bruises, sprains and strains. And sometimes with having, and having an athletic trainer at these contests and practices, they'll be looked after. And this is kind of a neat little quote, would you drop your child off a swimming pool without a lifeguard? No. And what's happening here under our current model, our athletic trainer leaves at 3:30, 4 o'clock, but we still have practices going on 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night. Do you think injuries happen at that time? So I did a little research. These are the schools that have full-time athletic trainers in the area that I could find. In our county, Arlington has two, the size of the school, Ketchum, Jay, Beacon, Red Hook, Pine Plains, Poughkeepsie, Spackenkill, all those others in the area. Some of them through orthopedic associates, others through other orthopedic groups or rehabilitation groups. But the game, most, most of the people go through orthopedic associates, most schools. So what, what is the athletic, full-time athletic trainer? Typically, at 2, 2 o'clock, 2:15, our school ends. The athletic trainer would show up at 1:30 in the afternoon, would go to the nurse, check with the nurse about injuries, check with the nurse about concussion protocol, who the trainer would have to see. And at 2:15, when the bell rings, the door opens. And typically what would happen, students would be lined up outside the door to, to either get taped, examined, or do some rehabilitation exercises. I know at my former school, at my former school, that door opened, that room was packed with kids. And then they went off to their practices. Once all the kids were off at their practices, the door would shut, then the trainer would go out to the fields and roam around. And each coach had a cell phone, had the cell phone of that, of the trainer if they needed, but would wander around the, around the practices or position himself to be able to respond to an emergency or respond to a coach's need. The athletic trainer will be available afternoons, evenings, Saturdays. Typically, a workday schedule is from 1:30 until the last practice is over. And it's five to six days a week. What I did in my previous school, I worked with the trainer. We set up a schedule based on what we were having that week in practices, what we were having as far as contests, so we could get maximum coverage for all of our events. Now, I know a question was asked at a meeting I was at, I think it was a community health meeting, where we're spread out in some areas, cross-country is somewhere, cheerleading is somewhere. Those things can be worked out where you're a cell phone away or a priority may be given to the cross-country team who runs down at, was it Mills Mansion, which is a very, very difficult course. So on that particular day, that's where the trainer will be. But the coaches will always have access to, to the, to the trainer by phone. But the big thing is after school, five to six days a week, and which we don't have right now. My next slide show compares the two, what we have and what is proposed. Now, I have to tell you, the model on the right, which is our current model, in my previous school district, that's what we started with. And what we found, what we found that, that the community, the parents, they wanted more because they wanted more for their kids. So we ended up going out and doing a service contract with a group. Initially, we did not use orthopedic associates. We used somebody else for two or three years. And then that group backed out and we ended up going with the orthopedic associates. But that's how we ended up implementing a full-time athletic training, trainer in my former school district. And that's the way most school districts went. And from what I understand, that model on the right was probably implemented back in the late 60s, 70s. So here it is, 217 and 2017, and we're still using that same model. What is an athletic trainer? There are a couple of words on this slide that really define what a trainer is. Prevention, examination, diagnosis, treatment, and rehabilitation. It's more than, a trainer is more than just waiting around for an injury to occur. They're there to assist the kids to rehab injuries, tape. They're there to treat injuries, to help diagnose injuries if we need to send a student athlete to the doctor or to the hospital. Trainer, athletic training responsibilities. Again, the athletic trainer would be responsible to concussion... Again, the athletic trainer would be responsible to concussion management protocol for the athletes and consultation with the nurse. And again, we want to be able to get our athletes back, be ready to practice or compete, but in a safe way. Responsible for implementing impact testing. I'm not sure if you all know what impact testing is, and I have a flyer here, I'll pass it around. Impact testing is basically the students go on a computer, they get a baseline of brain activity, and then when a student has an injury, they go back on the computer and we get to see what the difference is on their brain activity after an injury. It's just another piece in diagnosing a head injury. This is another, this is something else that I've been trying to implement here at Hyde Park since I came last December. And, you know, the problem with this has been how do you implement it, you know, without a full-time trainer? And if we get the full-time trainer, certainly that will be a way to go. Care and treatment of injuries at practices, initial assessment of injuries, provide emergency or continued care, whether they should be referred to physicians or for definitive diagnosis and treatment. Hey, we're all parents, we all have our kids. Your son or daughter comes home, sore arm, sore leg, ankle, you know, do I bring your child to the doctor or not? Now you have somebody to consult with. And he or she is going to give you the best advice possible, whether to proceed to the doctor or not. Not everybody has insurance. And this is one way of dealing with the parents and getting the proper care for our athletes. Number five, apply protective injury, protective tape, braces. You know, again, I mentioned before, at the end of the school day, training door opens, they would tape fingers, ankles, whatever they need to be, some protective taping for our kids. Provide preventative and rehabilitation exercises. The trainer should be working with the coach, working on preventive exercises so we can prevent strains and preventing injuries. An athlete gets a pulled muscle, we're able to, the trainer's able to give him some exercises to rehabilitate that injury. Again, the big thing is evaluate the athlete's readiness to play and provide participation clearance when necessary and wanted. Listen, we've all been there. I was a coach. And the first thing I want is my star player back on the field. And with the trainer, he has, he or she has the final say whether that athlete is ready to go as a hundred percent or near a hundred percent to participate. And that's, this is very, very important. We're not going to be sending our kids out on the field that are not ready. Again, provide athletic training services. We would, again, the schedule would be devised in such a way, we'd try to spread it out, making sure all of our contests are covered. But the state regulation is football games take priority. There has to be either an ambulance or a certified trainer at football games. Act as a liaison between the school nurse, family physicians, specialists, athletic director and athletes. The trainer can talk with the parents about injuries, give the parent advice on where to take the athlete for treatment, talk with the school nurse about the injuries. It's important that that kind of communication exists with the athletic trainer. Maintain records, self-explanatory, and develop a budget, self-explanatory. But that's basically what an athletic trainer does. And I'm basing it, again, on my experiences, but I'm sure this goes on in every school district in the country that has an athletic trainer. How can we afford athletic training services? That's a million dollar question.
Not quite.
You don't have that? You don't have that? Currently, currently, we, at football games, we're spending around $2,500 for ambulance coverage. At soccer games, which is a non, technically a non-contact sport, 4,000. And lacrosse games, 3,800. And that includes modified contests. Let me ask you something. Do we send an ambulance to Hyde Park rec soccer games? I don't think so. And that's some of the same kids are playing in that league. Ambulance coverage, they're there for emergency purposes only. They're not there to tape. They're not there to put ice on athletes who have injuries. If it's an, if it's an emergency and the student's not moving, they will come out of their vehicle, they will tend to the athlete. And we're spending about, over $10,000 just on ambulance coverage. Now, the question is, what about football games? Now, I've been in the business a long time and not many schools are doing it. And as you can see, the only two schools that I could find in the area, Red Hook only does football and Spackenkill only does varsity football as far as ambulance coverages. And I could not find a school that ever did soccer or lacrosse. Our current athletic trainer, and this is his stipend based on the Teachers Association contract, comes to about $13,000. So between, you have 13,000 and you have another 10, we're up near 24,000 right there alone. So, this is a proposal that I received from orthopedic associates. We didn't know whether our current trainer was going to come back in the spring, so I ended up getting a price. And then I asked orthopedic associates to put together something for next year, and that's what it came out to be. Now, you're seeing a big number there, 50,000. That trainer obviously is not making $50,000. That trainer's probably making about 32,000, 33,000, then you got benefits. Orthopedic associates is not making a heck of a lot of money on this deal. What they're hoping for, I'll be quite honest with you, they're hoping for referrals, people that go there. And that's with any group that does these type of training services. But the final cost would be about $50,000. And what you have to say to yourself is, is it worth it? Is it worth to make sure our kids are safe and cared for? And quite honestly, from my position, I think it's important and it's money worth, well, worth spent. Do you have any questions for me or Mr. Powers? Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Nice job. Some of the high schools.
Could you, excuse me, sir? Is it possible?
I project pretty well.
Yeah, but it's for the, it's for the camera. Yeah. Yeah, we want to make you famous.
The, some, there are actually more schools that could have been listed. You're a little behind right now in the area. And I could go further down, Peak Scale, Brewster, Carmel, you know, expand. I'm an athletic trainer, but primarily my position now at Marist College is to direct the athletic training education program. So I have students who go through our program to become athletic trainers. Some are working right now locally in our high schools. In athletic training, you have to have a bachelor's degree at least, so you have to go to college. You have to go to a specific accredited athletic training program. And there are about 350 of them right now in the country. Beginning 2022, it has to be a master's degree. So you not only have to go undergrad, you have to obtain a master's degree in athletic training to take and pass your state, or there's a national board that they have to sit for when they're done, and then you have to become licensed in the state. The biggest challenge for us as a profession is a lot of people just don't understand athletic training. Some confuse us with personal trainers, others more like managers. And you see, again, a lot, you think of the person who tapes and does ice and things. Probably the biggest area, the biggest value of an athletic trainer, particularly at this level, a high school level, is managing emergencies. Our standard of care is equal and even greater than what an EMT has. The training is far more advanced. And I could show you story after story after story of a fatality happening at a high school, whether it be an athlete, a coach, an official, other people involved. I had a gentleman working the chains at a high school football game go into cardiac arrest. Okay? Spectators even, because usually the athletic trainer is the only person really trained to manage. So I could show you story after story of a fatality happening at a high school, and the common denominator, no athletic trainer. But then I could show you story after story after story of an emergency situation happening at a high school, and it's a save. What's the common denominator? They had an athletic trainer. And I'm not being overly dramatic when I say this. So, we use a saying, if you don't think you can afford an athletic trainer, then you can't afford to have an athletics program. You can't have a team without a coach, you should not have an athletics program without an athletic trainer. You're basically a lawsuit waiting to happen. And again, I can show you litigation that's already occurred where precedence has been set, where the courts have found that the school owed the student athletes that kind of care and weren't providing it. Again, that's my main job, but I'm also a parent. I have two sons who, a few years down the road, will likely be playing sports here. According to my eight-year-old, he's going to be the starting quarterback.
Well, there you go.
So, in addition to the emergency, also just managing the non-emergency things, ACLs, ankle sprains. A minor injury that's not cared for properly becomes a major injury. And we consider ourselves to be advocates for these young athletes. And so I just can't stress enough the importance of having an athletic trainer. Not just because I am one, not just because I produce them, just because that's the reality of it.
So, I have a question. Does Marist have an intern program?
We do. And right now, so, just like med school students and physician assistants and physical therapy students have to do clinical rotations, my students do as well, just like your student teachers are coming out. And right now, we're there at all the local high schools except for this one, because the model you have right now.
They're insured? And are they insured?
Yes, yes. We have, all our students are covered under a blanket policy that we have a liability insurance policy, yes. As well as the athletic trainers through orthopedic associates are also covered with a liability insurance policy.
Okay. I guess I'm a little concerned, and maybe I shouldn't be, about care of the visiting team and what they may expect and what they may get, and whether or not they can then say, you didn't give us the level of care that we got at wherever, and open us up to some kind of legal issue.
Well, right now, one, and I don't know this, there's no state law regarding who is responsible for who. Some of your, of state organization, like the New York State Public High School Association, and some districts do have a rule requiring the host athletic trainer to also be responsible for visiting teams. So, the reality of it is, there has to be some rule or policy in place requiring them to care for the visiting team. Otherwise, it just becomes a Good Samaritan thing, where they're caring for them, but just out of the goodness of their heart.
My experiences over the years, the visiting team would be under the care of the athletic trainer. And when we go to another school, the, and one of our kids get hurt, the athletic trainer would take care of that injury. And same thing here, we would do the same thing. Our current trainer, when he's available, he does the same thing. But I got to tell you, most teams, when they come here at 4:30, first thing they ask me, oh, where's the trainer? And, you know, and we don't have one, unfortunately.
And again, that kind of care is more, so just always, there's always been this understanding. That's just how it is. But there's no legal requirement.
Back in my mind, wasn't there a controversy, maybe, about ambulance coverage or something that were, didn't we have a football game or soccer game, something where the coverage wasn't, and we were left open, we potentially were going to be sued by some family in Walkeel or something like, somewhere like that? And I don't know what happened to it, but I'm concerned about there being some accommodation that protects the district for any of this.
I think if you consult with your board attorney, I know that your firm represents many of the school districts listed on that slide.
Eric, you keep on saying that we don't have an athletic trainer. We do have an athletic trainer.
So, according to the stipend he receives and the job description, it's till 3:30.
From what time does it start?
When school ends. I have, it's very yellowed, so it's a very old job description. And it only requires the, it only requires the athletic trainer to be at football, football games, basketball games, and gymnastics. Those are the only events he's required to be at.
And, I'm sorry, and football games are already covered? I mean, we already get an ambulance for the football games?
Correct. But that's, but that, in the job description that I pulled, the athletic trainer had to be at that.
So, in this new model, for example, we wouldn't need an ambulance?
That's correct.
Because we would have, so it's an either/or situation?
Correct. And personally, and I think Mr. Powers would agree, I'd rather have the athletic trainer there attending to the injuries than a, than a.
And they would make the decision to call an ambulance if necessary?
Correct, correct.
The, again, it's a much broader standard of care. If you ask an EMT with that knee injury, did they tear the ACL, MCL, PCL, all these ligament names, the cartilage, wouldn't have a clue. EMTs cannot make return-to-play decisions. So if you have an athlete injured during the game and they come out, the EMT can't determine whether they are safely, can safely return. They can't tape them, they can't do anything to help them get back in. Athletic trainers, it's in their standard of care to make return-to-play decisions. EMTs just say, well, either go to the hospital or you don't.
I will say that my daughter was running cross-country in Walkeel in Invitational, and she collapsed at the end. And it was Walkeel's athletic trainer that did a lot of stuff and helped us understand what was going on. But then we had our track Invitational, and her foot swelled up. And the ambulance came, but they, unless we were taking them to the hospital, they didn't do anything. We had to get her own ice and everything. And this proposal did come before the Health and Welfare Committee and has the full support of the Health and Welfare Committee.
Okay, good to know.
And I also want to say that I work with a volunteer coach from another school district, and they use orthopedic associates. And he does have high regards for the Marist program.
Thank you. And don't, and don't take this as me putting EMTs down. I am one as well, so, and I volunteer at Roosevelt.
Any other questions?
To make this program effective, would there have to be any changes or modifications to the scheduling of teams and practices?
No, no, not at all. We would have to sit down and just look at it. But again, at FDR, let's use the fall, in the fall season, 1:30 he starts, goes to his, does office hours, then he'll position himself outside. Sometimes we have two soccer games going on, sometimes we have other tennis, we have tennis, we have volleyball. But the trainer will be accessible to everybody, either by phone or by radio, because we have supervisors out there anyway. And then the trainer would go to wherever he or she is needed.
So we're not needing, we're not needing to update the golf cart to an ATV to get them around from New York?
I hope not. Like I said, the only, the only thing in question to me, and I would have to work that through, well, through is a little bit, some of our, some of our teams do practice off-site. I know cheerleading is down at, down at North Park, but that's close enough for a trainer to get there quickly. Mills Mansion, well, that's another story. And then you have the middle school teams. But if you, if we can, I know in my prior school district, the parents trusted the trainer and even the middle school. They, if they, after practice, they knew that the trainer was available at 6 o'clock because he had, he was up at the high school. They would take the kids from the middle school up to be evaluated by the trainer prior to going to the home or taking the athlete to the doctors.
Yeah, and I know all of our coaches are required to take basic first aid and stuff like that, but would the athletic trainers? but would the athletic trainers be available for additional training of the coaches in terms of, you know, types of exercises and programs for specific sports?
Of course, yes.
Because I know, I know the level of expertise these guys have. I worked at Marist several summers with the program and they had the, I'm drawing a blank on the fellow's name that was there. But he was there for every practice, for every, every program that was going on. And he just, he just could identify, he had like an antenna. He could identify a kid that was, that was injured that wasn't saying anything to a coach and sort of walk over and start talking to them. And just totally invaluable in their insight into the psyche of kids. Because you know a kid that's hurt is going to tell you, no, I'm fine, coach, I want to go out in the field. I'm ready to go, I guarantee it, you know? That's a level of expertise that can get lost between the coaches trying to coach the kids that are out there and what's going on around them.
Again, in my prior district, the trainers, he would, he would have these sessions of taping sessions with the, with the coaches, just to refresh them and how to do fingers or ankles. Our one athletic trainer, he was certified in first aid, so he did first aid for the coaches. I mean, we're lucky right now, we have Susan Cirillo who takes care of our coaches as far as certification here. But certainly, the athletic trainers, the athletic trainer would certainly educate the coaches a little bit more. And more importantly, they get to coach and not have to worry about tending to an injury on the sideline, the trainer's there.
Exactly. And you know, I had, at one point in time, I had five kids participating in varsity sports in three different programs for three consecutive seasons. And I couldn't keep track of them. I couldn't tell who was in, and three of them looked alike for some strange reason, they were identical triplets. If one seemed to be injured, they'd sort of circle the wagons and disappear in three directions. You never knew who was hurt. But you know, it was funny how I always got the word back to me from the coaches and from the, the people that dealt with them saying, have you checked so-and-so out? Because I think his ankle is bothering him a lot more than he's letting on, that kind of stuff. And I could see a physical, athletic trainer being invaluable for keeping these kids from getting beyond the point where an injury is just an injury and it becomes a permanent problem.
I got a question about the cost.
Yes.
Do we know what the, the current escalation rate is? And your slide went from 45-something to 5,000. That's a 9% raise. I just.
The first slide, the first number, I had asked just to give me a price for four months. You know, obviously, our goal here was really, or my goal was to get a price for an entire year. And the other piece of it is, you know, athletic trainers are hard to get. I know, unless, unless we get something from Marist, some from Marist. So the job needs to be posted and we need to, not us posted, but certainly they need to search out.
I just want to feel better about it not being a runaway program. That's going to keep going up and up and up and up. We do have a limit to.
I will say, in my time in my previous school, that number stayed the same for five years. I can't guarantee that's going to happen now, but it did stay.
Okay, no, I just wanted to get the feel.
They would have that data if they would share that with you because they've had these contracts with the other high schools for quite some time. And if they were willing to share, they could show you if it's gone up and how much, so.
Okay. I'm buying into the, I'm buying into the theory that we need a trainer, but I just want to make sure we can afford it and that it's going to be affordable for years to come and not be a line item that we worry about every, every year. That's all.
I see your point, you don't want to see it next year, it could be up there at 60,000. Eric told me it was only going to be 50. I get that, I really do.
Eric, do any districts employ their own?
Not, you could answer that, but there are, there are a few in Westchester that I know. And I deal with a lot of schools and doing some things down that way. There are a few, but most of them are doing contracts either through an orthopedic associates type group or a physical therapy type group. Maybe you can answer that.
The challenge is in most high schools to have the district hired directly. A lot of times they're looking for that teacher who is also an athletic trainer. The two that were at Arlington for a while, Arlington did use that model. But when the two of them stopped being the athletic trainer, they couldn't find anyone that fit the qualifications of teaching and athletic training. So they went to orthopedic associates to do that. So you do find that. I used to live in Virginia and Fairfax County has 25 high schools. Every high school has two athletic trainers. One is just an athletic trainer, the other one is a teacher who is also an athletic trainer.
And again, the model that we had in my former district, it was a teacher. But think about it, that teacher's coming in at 7 o'clock for a high school, for a high school classes and leaving at 9 o'clock. And then, in the case of my, in my previous school, the trainer had a family, couldn't make that commitment anymore.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, very informative. We'll see where this goes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And work with them, if we can get interns.
I'm ready.
Okay. Well, that brings us to the preliminary budget.
Okay, good evening.
I'm seeing more familiar faces now. Now I can see everybody that I'm used to seeing.
Yeah, Paul's listening. Good evening. So tonight I want to talk about the tax cap calculation and the preliminary budget. At the last meeting, we had scheduled to talk about the tax cap, but because that was canceled, I wanted to make sure we included it tonight. I have the tax cap calculation up on the screen now. I won't go through it step by step unless anybody would like me to. I just want to point out two of the factors that I think are most important. That's the tax-based growth factor. It's the first step in the calculation. The tax-based growth factor is school district-specific. It's actually related to a quantity change of property in the district. So that's more like the new construction. The rate for this year is only 0.76%, but that's an increase of, over last year, of 0.11%. The most significant factor is the allowable levy growth factor. You can see that halfway through the screen, right here. That is the factor that's related to the CPI or the change in CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index. For this year, we have the allowable levy growth factor of 1.26%. You might remember that last year it was only 0.12%. So when we factor in those two factors and add in other things like our pilots and the debt service, we have an allowable levy increase this year of 2% or 1,156,286. So I think at the last meeting when we talked about the rollover budget, we were estimating 1.98%. Does anybody want to talk about the calculation before we move on?
No, I think they're, anybody? They're, they are what they are.
So when we had presented the rollover budget, we were assuming an overall increase of 1.34%. We've made some changes to that budget. We accounted for some teacher retirements. We also accounted for the requests that came in from the principals and the other administrators. So right now, in our first draft of the preliminary budget, this will change before we have the final proposed budget. But right now, we're looking at an increase of 1.3% or 1,177,473. So the preliminary budget is 91,615,000. This slider here shows the revenues. I, I wanted to show the different scenarios that we could have for the tax levy.
Linda, before you go on, just so nobody gets confused, or I don't get confused, the 1.3% is an increase in the total budget, it is not the tax levy increase.
Thank you. The 1.3% is the budget-to-budget increase. So that's the increase from the '16-'17 budget to the '17-'18 preliminary budget. We had talked at the last meeting about setting the tax levy at an amount other than the maximum amount. So for the revenues, I just wanted to show what that would look like under three different scenarios. So here I show what the tax levy increase would be at 2%, which is the maximum amount. At 1.26%, which is the change in CPI, that's the inflationary factor, or at 0%. So if you look at the revenues, you'll see there's only two lines that change under each scenario. That's the actual tax levy and the fund balance appropriation. So if we set the levy at the maximum amount, you'll see also that at the end of the year, we'll be over 8% in the unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is the amount that's limited to 4%. If we set the tax levy at 0%, we would be about 7% for the unassigned fund balance at year end. So I also wanted to show how long we would be over the 4% and that's the last line. So at 2%, we would be almost eight years where we're over the 4%. But at 0%, it would still be high, it would be over six years.
Well, it'd be eight years unless we did something about.
Yes, so that's the next part. So there is something that we can do. In the past, we would appropriate money to the front, to the budget, but not use it. So my proposal is that we either appropriate money to take care of some one-time items like cash capital projects or to actually increase the reserve. And the best reserve to increase, in my opinion, is the capital reserve.
Right.
So currently in the budget, we have planned a 2 million reserve. But if we increase that to 5 million, we could bring the fund balance down to about 5% under the 2% scenario. And it would be under 4.5% on the 1.26% scenario. So that's something that we really have to decide tonight, if we want to be at 2%, 1.26 or the zero. Because at the net, or before the next meeting, I have to report this information to the state.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, to be clear, by allocating this money to a cap, how did you?
A capital reserve.
A capital reserve. In a wonderful world, right, in a dream world, that would give us $5 million to spend on something.
Yes, we currently have.
I'm just making it simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's voter-approved.
Yeah, it has to be voter-approved and we have to, we have to have some guy, we have to have, we have to define the project, not specifically, but we could say that we would use it towards the next capital project that's being determined by the, by the district at this time.
Right, it has to be, it has to be a capital project, so it could be, I mean, I don't want to say anything that anybody's going to interpret. I don't mean to, no, I don't mean to do that. But I'm saying, you know, I mean, but obviously, not to buy new, not to buy new chairs. It would, it would be something like replacing a roof on one of our buildings.
Yes, yes, it would have to be something like, a big project like that, something that we could generate aid on. It would have to be a capital project. So currently, we have a $2 million capital reserve. That's, the voters approved that last year and we said that we would use that for a project within 10 years and a project identified in the, in the building condition survey. We could do the same thing again. In my projection for the year-end fund balance, I assumed we were going to ask the voters for another $2 million capital reserve. But we could increase that to five.
Because we have to limit what's in the fund balance.
We should have a plan for what's in the fund balance, yes. So by having a capital reserve, it's a way to address the fund balance without increasing the budget or the tax levy.
And how did our fund balance get so big? I mean, like, what didn't we do? Did we not keep up with this, assigning a capital project and then that's what kind of happened? It was just a different theory in how to allocate the money?
Well, fund balance is built over time. There was a time, maybe 10, 15 years ago, where there was no reserves in Hyde Park.
2,000, there were 50 bucks.
Right. So then the district worked really hard, where for a few years started building reserves and built them up. We're to a point now where we pretty much have the reserves that we need. Reserves that we could add to would be reserves that we would have a plan for soon and that would be a capital reserve.
Okay, I guess I'm not understanding the difference between fund balance and reserves then.
Reserves are part of a, part of the fund balance.
Oh, okay.
And the reserves aren't subject to the 4% limit. So if we do have a $5 million capital reserve, that money will still be in the overall fund balance. It just won't be in the part that's restricted to 4% of the next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Pamela.
Yeah, and I like the idea of a capital reserve because when we actually spend the money, we can get building aid on it. Our building aid ratio is just about 50%. So if we spend 5 million, well, we'll have 7 million in a reserve if it gets approved this year for five. If we spend, when we spend that 7 million, we'll get 3.5 million back in aid from the state or roughly 3.5 million.
So when you say five, that's an additional three?
It's an additional three.
Okay.
Right. And then if we did that, let's just say we went with the 1.26% tax levy increase. If we increase the capital reserve to 5 million, that fund balance, the unassigned fund balance, which is this number right here, that number would decrease by 3 million. So it'd be 4.1 million and the unassigned fund balance at this year's end would be about 4.5%. So we'd still be over the 4%, but we'd be closer.
Okay.
And if we went with the 2%?
If we went with the 2%, it was 4.99% would be the unassigned fund balance with a $5 million capital reserve.
All right. You know, my inclination is to get whatever we're allowed to get because of this whole system's rigged.
Yeah, I do have some more slides that can, I have some, I took some advice from Mr. Duffy. I have some more slides I'll show you, yes.
That'll get you, bro.
That's good. You mean junior, junior.
So at the, at the last meeting, Mr. Duffy asked about the levy difference and what we would be giving up in the tax levy if we set the levy below the allowable amount. So I added to the projections that I had showed last time. At the very bottom, there's, the last three lines, line number 16 says the projected tax levy cap, if '17-'18 is at the capped amount. Below that shows the annual levy, the annual levy difference just for that year, but underneath that is the accumulated levy difference. So if we set the tax levy at 0% this year for '17-'18 and then had three years where it was at 2%, now that's assuming that we could levy at 2% in those following years. We won't know until we actually get the information in those years. But if it was 2%, by the end of 2021, we would have given up $4.7 million in taxes. If we did this at 1.26%, and this is assuming 1.26% tax levy increase for every year, at the end of 2021, we would have given up 1.7 million. And of course, if, if we were at 2%, we wouldn't, we currently wouldn't be on track to give up anything. So then the difference is about $3 million between the 0% and the 1.26%.
So the 2% one is with an increase of $3 million of the capital project also? That all wrapped in together?
Well, I was, in this scenario here, it's assuming a $2 million capital reserve. My suggestion is that we increase it to 5 million.
Right, I like that suggestion, actually.
Is there a limit to how much you can transfer from unassigned to the capital reserve?
Well, the voters have to approve it. So the limit would be what the voters approve, so.
So you could really transfer as much as you want, propose to transfer as much as you want to get that unassigned to 4%?
And there are, we would, we would have to identify a project. Of course, we don't know what the project is yet because it's still, you know, being discussed, but we would have to have some plan for it. And we'd also have, have to have a time limit on when we would spend it. So we could say, you know, $5 million for 10 years in a reserve.
But we have plenty of stuff on the five-year study.
Yes, yes. And if we didn't spend it, I mean, I don't think that would be an issue, but if we didn't spend it in the time period, it goes back to the general, general fund and back to fund balance.
And the district leadership team, we're hoping to make some recommendation in the near future on capital project.
Yeah. I think we, it would, the attorney said it would be. Yeah. I think we, it would, the attorney said it would be safe to say that it was a project based on information in the building condition survey.
Oh, that would cover, oh, yeah, just broadening. Covers everything.
Yeah. So the state is looking for us to have our capital projects based on that survey anyway. So, is there more?
You, you would like us to discuss this, right?
Yes, I would like a discussion.
So let me, let me just recap. The 1.26, which is what I asked you to do. So I want to start with that. This chart, that, does that include also putting $3 million in the-
Two. So-
Just two?
Yeah. Each one of these scenarios shows what it would be at 2 million. If-
Okay, and if we went to five?
If we increased to five, the budget numbers stay, save, or excuse me, stay the same. It would still be a $91.6 million budget. The taxes would be the same. It'd be the unassigned fund balance that would change.
That's what I'd like to know.
Yeah. We would move the money from the unassigned fund balance to the reserve. So it actually wouldn't affect the budget at all, and it wouldn't affect the tax levy either.
Okay. But I wanted to know what the, after moving $3 million, what we have left in, is it, we're at 4% then?
So for the 1.26%, if we move $3 million from unassigned, we'd be about 4.5% for the unassigned fund balance. We wouldn't be at the 4% yet.
So you could, in theory, move more than $3 million. You can move 3.5 to get you down to 4%.
Mm-hmm. And the estimate, the year-end, or, that's just estimates, too. That's based on what we're expecting to spend from now until June 30th.
I'd like a little wiggle room in, in there. I don't want it to go below, just because something came in, a new, well, heck, a new family with five special ed kids could sink us pretty quick, you know, so.
So, that, that brings up another good question. So please explain to me again, then, what are the restrictions that we have? When we have the restrictions on the fund balance, I know we're, we, we want to bring it down to 4%, correct?
Yes. Well-
So why, what do we spend that 4% on? What are, what are some examples of, of what we need that money for?
Well, the, the 4% is the, it's basically the amount that we're allowed to save, that we don't specify for a specific reason at the time that we save it.
Right.
So it could cover-
The, cover the, from the end of the school year until where we've already spent all our money, until we start receiving money, there's that gap. At their, Poughkeepsie, for instance, borrows money.
Like a tan.
And it costs, and the interest on their borrowing, where they put 300,000, I think, in, or something like that.
Right, right. If they take a tan, right, to, to bridge the gap.
Right. So that's one thing.
Yeah, that's one thing.
There are, there are other things.
Right. And like Doug mentioned, too, if we had families move in that needed some more services.
Okay, so that's the type of thing. That's why we have that.
Right.
Okay. So I'm trying to just differentiate to try to figure out what Mike is saying, Mike White.
Is there a penalty for going, being above four?
Um, the auditor, the external auditor mentions it in their report, they're required to. When we developed the corrective action plan, we have to state, we have to have a plan for it. This year, we said that we would address it in future budgets. And that gets reported to the state.
Right. We've been over for the last 12 years. Nobody's even slapped our wrists. Although, we have, as a board, tried very hard to bring it down. In some years, it was really difficult, because things happen.
Doesn't affect the bond ratings or anything?
It actually helps the bond ratings.
It helps it?
Yeah.
Yeah, our bond rating is really good.
We received our affirmation today from Moody's that we're the, still AA3. That's the highest level for bond rating. So the higher the fund balance, the higher-
Right. And the lower the interest you pay on the capital projects, for instance.
Yeah.
So, I'll take a stab. I, although, I have said, I wanted to go with whatever we could get, the, I'm leaning towards the 1.26 one.
Do you want my, I can give you my opinion. I thought I would be all for the 1.26% until I calculated what we would be at year end. And 4.99% fund balance compared to the 4.5 that it would be if we have the $5 million reserve, really isn't that much. You know, it's less than, it's less than 1%. It's less than half a percent. So I'm going to go back to the slides where it shows what we'd be giving up. So rather than giving up 4.7 million over the next few years, we could potentially be giving up nothing if we set the levy at the maximum amount for the next few years. So I think if, if we have a plan to spend some money, or to save it, to reserve it, we could be at the 2%. And the fact that we added money to our capital reserve could be the plan for, for the fund, for the unassigned fund balance. But on the other hand-
The difference in the tax levy, though, is for-
No, yeah. It'd be the, the 50, the, the 2% is the 59.1 million tax levy. And then the 1.26% is 58.6.
More palatable for the taxpayers. What did you say, Greg?
So at 1.26, though, the community's tax bill would be lower?
Yes.
Just, just to make that clear.
Well, the overall levy would be low.
The overall level.
Right, yes. The tax rates are actually affected by assessments and equalization rates. And we don't know that until August.
Right. Don't get me started on that.
Oh, get started, Ken. Get started, Doug.
So 0% would imply taxes go up. I mean, if, if, if the public looks at that, they're going to say, oh, if you vote 0, I don't have to pay an increase in taxes. But that's, that's not true because of the equalization rate. It could go up 10%.
Right. Like, in 1617, that was our lowest tax levy increase in 40 years. I don't know if you remember that from last year. That was a 0.22% increase. The towns of Clinton, Pleasant Valley, and Reinbeck, and Poughkeepsie, all experienced a decrease in their tax rate. But the tax rates in Hyde Park were, went up about 2% because their equalization rate went down. So-
Right. That, that's the problem. We fix the budget, and we set, then they vote, and everything happens. And then the state can come down and change the equalization rate.
These numbers don't translate to a person's tax bill.
Right, right.
No, no.
Right. Well, you can talk me out of the 1.26, as far as, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, the 1.26, well, it's less than half a percent, so, you know.
Linda, my recollection of the last few budget seasons has been talking about where, where we're going to find money for services that we're either, we were considering reducing or eliminating. Now, maybe that goes back to the point, what, eight years ago, seven years ago, where they, they jerked $4 million out from underneath us, and we had to fire 40 teachers?
The gap elimination fund?
Yeah, that was, that was a tough year. So, things have obviously changed since then. But what has changed such that-
Actually retired. Those, they, just, just so the public know, that we didn't fire them, they, there were enough retirees-
But we still reduced our staff by 40 positions.
Right. But we also had, and we also had student reduction, which helped that as well.
Over about six years, New York State took about $17 million from us to help meet their budget gaps.
That they're not giving back.
But that's over with now.
So, so is that what's going on here? Now we're managing fund balance because the, the GEA, the gap elimination-
Well, we're budgeting differently than the budgets were done in the past, too. So like I said at the last meeting, in the past, we would have a target number for the unassigned fund balance. So to get there, we would appropriate more to the budget. And we would just increase, the revenue budget has to match the expense budget. So we would increase the appropriations, which would bring up the revenue budget, and we would also increase the expenses in the budget. But we didn't have a plan for spending that.
You're right. And then we didn't spend it.
Right. So that would go back to fund balance. And the next year, we would, yeah, we would appropriate it again.
Okay.
Right. So what we're trying to get away from now is we don't want to appropriate more than we need to the next year's budget.
So the other thing that I remember, and unfortunately, I'm working from memory, I can't locate my notes or presentations. But at one point, I remember receiving a brief that talked about the idea that a school system had to go out for their full possible increase in their revenues in order to not fall behind critically in their funding.
Yeah.
And can, so can you refresh my memory? What was the, what was the impetus behind that? And what's changed such that it's no longer true?
Well, there are some school districts that suffered a lot more than Hyde Park did when, because of the budget crisis. When the tax cap was first implemented, that was about the same time as the gap elimination adjustment. Foundation aid had been frozen for a few years by then. So on this slide, the reason why it was recommended that districts stay at the tax cap was so they wouldn't give up any future year's ability to raise taxes. So that's why I added the last few lines here, to show what we could potentially give up if we set the levy below the maximum amount.
So that, that segues into my next question, which is, how realistic is it to, is it that we should believe that it's going to be possible over that time span to increase taxes by, or, I'm sorry, the, the levy by 2%?
Yeah. It, it, that's just an assumption. We've had years where our allowable levy was over 2%. Obviously, like, last year, we had years where it was well below. This year, we just happened to be at 2%. Really didn't, I didn't like that, because so many people refer to the tax cap as the 2% tax cap. And that's not what it is. It's just coincidence that we're at 2% this year. So only because that's this year's allowable levy, that's why I use 2% in this calculation.
Would you happen to know or have a, an estimate of what the, the average allowable increase over the last three years has been, three, four years?
Um, I don't have that with me, but I could get that.
But can we agree that it's something less than 2%?
Yeah, she has a chart. She has a chart. I remember going back, 239, 271, then it went down.
Yeah. Last year was really low. It might as well have been 0 last year.
It's like this, if you look at the chart. You have, I know, I know you have a chart.
Yeah, I do have it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with our budgeting decision now, with the assumption that we'll be able to recover in the future, because we, we assume 2%.
Yeah. The, the scenario that I use for 1.26%, this one assumes 1.26% for every year. And that one shows that we'd still be, you know, give up about 1.7 million. You know, just from that first year of being below the, the allowable levy.
We give up a total community levy.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And yet, we're fully funding all programs.
Yes.
But I guess that's the, the thing that hasn't been bluntly stated.
Yep. We've already-
Right.
In the preliminary budget, we do have, we've already accounted for some changes. Like, there's some teacher retirees. So we assume that we hire people to replace them at a, you know, a lower step. We have the request in there, in the budget already, from all of the principals and the, and the administrators in cabinet. So Aviva, Greer, and I still have to go, go over everything before we have the final budget. And we are waiting, we are waiting for health insurance rate increases. And that's really, that's our biggest single budget item. It's more than, we spend a little more than $14 million in health insurance. So that's about 15% of our total budget.
More than a million of them.
The rates won't be known until, the rate won't be known until the middle of March, or the beginning of March. They're projecting 15% increases or more. In my budget scenario, I've assumed a 15% increase for health insurance.
So, health insurance has been increasing at double digits for more than a decade, right?
Right.
It was about, it was about 7% last year. The reason why we're facing 15% this year, it should have been a little bit higher last year.
Let me just try, why this seems to work, in the way I see it. We used to appropriate a fund balance towards the next thing. We never actually ever spent it, so that, that was just moving money from one, and then moving it back. And therefore, we can cut that out of the, instead of having the rollover budget as, keep going on that way, we can reduce that rollover. And now, we can deal directly with what the fund balance we have on hand at the moment. So, and that's what this is showing.
Right. So I did say, you know, at the last meeting, I wanted the, the board to consider setting the levy below the limit. But if we do, I'll just say now, if we do set it at the limit, as long as we have a plan for it, I'm comfortable with that. I'm hoping that Greer and Aviva would be comfortable with that, too.
And when you say a half percent difference, that would be half percent difference in what the actual tax levy would be?
No, I mean, in the unassigned fund balance.
That's the unassigned fund balance, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be-
So the difference, oh, okay. Yeah, the difference in the tax levy is, I don't like to use the word minimal, but it's kind of minimal. Right?
Yeah. And last year, last year, I came with numbers, like what the, what the tax rates could be. But I didn't do that this year, because the assessments went up, you know, increased a lot. And because the equalization rate for Hyde Park went down, I didn't feel that we should, you know, talk about what the potential tax rate could be, because we really don't have that information.
All right.
But do you, you do have a percent change in the tax levy?
Yes, yes. The tax levy. That's here. Either 2% is our maximum, 1.26, which, 1.26 is the, is the rate of inflation. It was the change in the Consumer Price Index. So I think that's why Doug asked for that, that level.
All right. I'm going to start the negotiation at 1.26. And here's my reasoning. 1.26 is the rate of inflation. And my thought process is that that is kind of an average increase. And if we stick with the average increase over time, it's going to keep us at kind of a level, even rate of increase. If we discover that everything has gone right, or even better than right next year, then we can look at reducing-
Yeah. That's a great point. The board is only going to adapt one budget at a time. So if you make a decision now for one of these scenarios, and things totally change next year, you know, we have to, we have to look at it again anyway. You know, if, if the board chooses the 1.26% increase, next year, you know, who knows what the situation will be next year.
Exactly.
But you'll look at it again. You're not committed to having a 1.26% increase every year, if you're allowed to.
And is that, and is that slide, it says budget projection scenario number two? That's, those are the numbers that we're talking about, then, with the 1.26, right?
Yes. Yes. And there, there's a lot of assumptions in this. Because we, we don't, we don't adopt more than one budget at a time. The projections for the actual revenues and expenditures is based on, based on a template from New York State Controller's Office. The fund balance projection for this year-end is just based on my projection. It changes a little bit, you know, every month when I update it. So it, it's just like a, kind of a guideline, or-
The other, the, the last part of my reasoning is that going with 1.26 shows the taxpayers that we're showing restraint. We could go out for 2%. We're not going to. And yet, I think it strikes a balance between that and prudence, where, you know, there is a lot of uncertainty in my mind about what we'll be able to do and afford next year. And, and going with 0 makes me uncomfortable. And I don't like making financial decisions from an emotional point of view. But, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that the, the education is funded correctly here. And if we discover we've got too much, you know, God forbid, too much money next year, we can make adjustments next year.
Mm-hmm. We can. We can look at, one of the things that I'll be doing this year is looking at the reserves. And we have two audit firms, and the external auditors, who they state that we're maxed out, other than the capital reserve, because that's voter-approved. They don't think we could add any to, any of our reserves. Our internal auditor thinks we have some room in some of the reserves to add to. So I'm going to do some research into that, and I'll be making recommendations about that in June. So that might change the numbers a little bit, too.
Can, at the 1.26, can we increase the capital budget, the, the capital reserve fund?
Yes. So-
By how much?
We could, we could increase it by $3 million to get to the $5 million. And we would be, from my estimates, we would be, instead of the 7.8% unassigned fund balance at June 30th, we would be at 4.5%.
Okay.
The only figure I have, you know, we've got the fund. Have we got any information- Have we got any information on how we would utilize the fund? How, do we know, or can we project how often we're going to need a capital improvement plan? And how much money that capital improvement plan should include to stay even in the district and not get into the holes we were in probably, like, I've been on the board 15 years, probably 17 years ago, when, you know, we, we had some beautiful skylights in our buildings, but they weren't supposed to be there because they were holes in the roof type of things, you know?
And the DLT, the district leadership team, is working on a proposal, is for the next capital project. Our financial advisors were here, I think he was here in June, and said that he's suggesting we have a capital project where we would take out debt of about, I think it was between 11 and 12 million. So, he was recommending a vote for that in December of 2018 so that our debt service would stay level. If, or 2017, yes, 2017, I'm sorry. If, but that, the 11 million is the amount of money that we would borrow. So, we could have a project where we have $11 million. If we wind up with 7 million in capital reserves, because we already have two, we would add that to that number. But he's, we also have another debt service drop off a couple of years later in 2020, 21. So, he's recommending that we have a capital project that we vote on December 2017, I said it wrong before, and another one in 2020, 21. Because if you go back, when I, when I had the tax levy calculation up here, the, I'm going to go back to that for just a moment. There, there's two areas where the debt service plays into here. It's last year's debt service and the current, and next year's debt service. So, right here, the $1.56 million is the tax, or the capital tax levy for 2016, 17. So, it's debt service we're paying this year minus building aid that we're receiving this year for capital projects that already happened. For 2017, 18, that number is at the very bottom, it's the $1,559,000. So, those, the difference between those two is so little, it doesn't affect the tax cap calculation at all. So, and that's why we want to keep that as level as possible. I think that might, I think that answered your question. No?
Dan, for the whole year, the district leadership team has been working with the recommendations on keeping our debt service level and our five-year building condition survey. One of the things on the district leadership team, that there's been a general commitment because where the Facility Steering Forum left off was that our next project would involve FTR Science Labs. We're also, the district leadership team completed our SWOT analysis. We have to do, that's the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. There are several of us here tonight that are on the Strategic Planning Committee. And so, we've looked at six scenarios that are all based on the five-year building condition survey. We're cognizant of looking at projects that would keep us, our debt service level, or, you know, maybe slightly go up if needed. With the addition of some capital reserve funds, you know, we have a little more wiggle room, but we should be ready to make a proposal in April, early May, to, to let you know what the district leadership team is, has been looking at as a future capital project. One of the other things that we're looking at is because he told us the debt service would go off and, would go down again in 2021, we've been looking at a stage one, stage two possible scenario, even though we wouldn't be voting on something for 2021. But to do all of the work in the building condition survey right now, and it's two years old, it's $30 million. And so, we know right now, we have $30 million worth of very specific work outlined in the building condition survey. The building condition survey happens every five years. It's already two years old. And so, we, we know that by 2021, we'll have an updated capital reserve because sometimes things shift. Obviously, most of the work listed in our current building condition survey is not going to go away. We're looking at things that are really, on a scale of one through five beyond life expectancy, we're looking at things that are in the three to five range. So, yeah, so, we're hoping to be able to put a presentation together in either April or May. So, we're, we're confident we have these capital projects and a recommendation. We've been hard at work. I know Elliot, Linda, Roger, a lot of us have been at the table for, for these meetings. So, it's a big committee. We have a lot of community members. We have a lot of teacher representations and representations from HPUE, and it's a good committee.
Yeah, I don't know how to express this. We've had presentations, recently, we've been hearing presentations on what we could do and how we should be approaching it to keep our debt service level.
Yeah.
Understand that. But at some point in time, I think there's a, there's a significant question. I don't know if it's being avoided, or I'm dismissing it in the sense of, if we do that, do we have the funds to do the repair that keeps the district in good condition? Or are we simply balancing our debt service to keep it level and exposing ourselves to sudden, to seeing a degradation in, again, the building? You know, I see, you know, the obvious thing I know we said was, here's what we think needs to, you know, from one to five, we need to get done. And that number's bigger than anything we would want to consider doing in the timeframe we're talking about. So, if we put stuff, stuff aside, is it things that are nice to have? Or are they things that are going to put us in jeopardy of things, you know?
No, we're not looking at things that are nice to have. We're looking at things that are absolutely, except for science labs, when I think a lot of people would argue that our science labs, and our big soundbite is they were, they were built before the man landed on the moon. So, I don't think the condition of our 50 and 70-year-old science labs are nice to have. That's the only thing that somebody could quibble with. The rest are HVAC infrastructure, roofs, windows, you know? So, but to your point, Dan, one of the things that the district leadership team is, is looking at right now is, we may be coming and saying, you know what, keeping the depth level service isn't good enough right now. We, we may be presenting a project that says, we may have to increase that a little. But, you know, that would, ultimately, it's a decision of the board. But, you know, $12 million doesn't get you very far.
Isn't that serious?
With the 30, with a, with a known, and, and the known 30 million in the building condition survey is just building condition survey. It does not include the cost of new science labs. Because the building condition survey is just that, not you need new science labs. So, there, there are a few unknowns in replacement or rebuilding of science labs. With that said, the firm that we had do the building condition survey did make certain recommendations because, gave us some guidance on certain things like redoing the pods because, how else do kids say, you could push the walls down? But knowing that if you have to rebuild or restructure some of the infrastructure of the pods, it's easier to put new science labs in there than where the old ones exist. So, we've been looking at the finances. We've been looking at the building condition survey since last year. The district leadership team has been engaged in the process of, of looking at our finances and our building condition survey. And we're, we're closing in on coming to the board and saying, this is our proposal, or these are two possible proposals for our next capital project.
Right.
You know, and just to show how wild my, my head has gotten recently, looking at what's going on now, I wonder, we constantly have worried about heating our buildings.
Right.
Keeping, keeping the kids warm and comfortable for that period of time. What I'm seeing coming down the line is a need at the front end and the back end of the school year to not worry about heating, but to have to actually physically cool the buildings to provide them suitable, you know?
Funny you should say that, yeah.
The climate change things, yeah, it's kind of scary. I mean, I look at this past month, this is a year that's projected to be a cold year. And yet, according to the Weather Channel, we set seven lows and 138 highs. And in several states, we had the all-time highest temperature for that month ever recorded.
Well, we, one of the things that the district leadership team has spent a lot of time discussing is the fact that we are a year-round school. We have 600 out of our 3,600 students coming through these doors during the summer. We're going to propose through the budget a middle-level program. Our schools are open year-round. It's, it's getting, that and coupled with the amount of people that come in with a script to say that they need air conditioning, we need to look at at least, starting with, if we're going to touch the HVAC, let's, let's identify two schools, put the stake in the ground, and say, this is going to be our secondary summer school, this is going to be our elementary summer school. And I, I really think that as we move down the line, when we look at HVAC projects, you really need to start looking at cooling the buildings as well as heating them.
And yet, the other comment I'll make is...
We are talking about it, yeah.
The other, the other thing, I've read articles on, and I've seen it, is the fact simulations, computer simulations of science labs provide a greater range of exploring for the kids and a greater experience for them than real labs. How much, you know, I, I, how much discussion have we seen in saying at all, do we have to have hands-on, you know, where the, where the kids are playing with the test tubes, where they're looking into the microscopes and stuff like that? When simulations can do exactly that for you without rebuilding the structure by using the, the technological background and infrastructure we're creating now?
I don't think I'd agree with that, but I would like to get back to the, to the budget.
Well, I'm just saying, it's...
We're, we're kind of off topic, and if we're ever going to get to give Linda direction, then we got to get that done first.
Elliot and I are currently taking a master's class together, and our professor said, board meeting should end early because nothing good happens after nine.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping that we can prove him wrong tonight.
All right, all right. So, I'm going to...
But that was nothing good.
I'm going to, because I asked for the 126, and Steve seems to agree, agree with me. I, I kind of like the idea for this year, for many reasons, to come under what we could legally ask of the public. And I would also like to, at the same time, increase the capital reserve fund.
So, that's by 3 million.
That's my, I would like what everybody else wants, you know, I don't know. You know, I, I think we, we got to give you direction, so, you know.
Thank you, yeah. So, 5 million reserve for proposition and the 1.26% tax levy increase.
That would be, that would be my suggestion.
Sudo, will you say, yeah, raise your hand, I think?
Uh, no, I think, this is just we're giving her direction. She's going to come back with it.
I think you do that when you actually adopt the budget.
No, I'm just saying, but you, I agree with it. Steve agrees with it, and you agree with it. That's three, three out of seven is four.
I got nods, I got nods over there, so...
I just want to make sure we had at least four supporting it.
We'll go with that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Now you have to go to work.
Oh, yes, work.
Yeah. You did, you did start almost before nine.
Yes.
You know?
I did. So, I just want to talk about the, the last slide. It just shows the, the upcoming board meetings that we have. We'll have a budget presentation at all of them until we actually have the budget vote. At the next meeting, March 9th, we'll be presenting the propositions. So, we'll have more information for the public then about the $5 million capital reserve. And George will be here, too, to talk about the, about the, about the bus proposition.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Lyndon. All right.
Oh, thank you.
So, would you believe we're finally up to public participation? May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. If anybody would like to rest the board, please tap up to the mic. Be interesting.
Hi, Fran White, from Hyde Park. I'd like to just address the athletic trainer proposal. As a coach in the district, I think it would be a wonderful idea to have a full-time trainer. I know that I send athletes all the time directly to the hospital or something because I'm trying to protect the athlete, myself, and the district. Sometimes it's, if I had a trainer that I could send them to, even if I'm at North Park, as Eric said, I could send them directly up to FTR for the trainer to take a look at them. It could help them financially not to have to go to a hospital to incur those costs because sometimes that's a huge burden for the family. And the end result is, if they don't have insurance, it comes back to the district anyway. So, you may be saving a little bit of money there. Also, having that full-time trainer for concussions, the pre-testing for concussions. I know that my cheerleaders are pretty smart, and they know that if they get diagnosed with a concussion, they're going to be out for a good three to four weeks. So, they try to hide that injury. So, it comes back to us to try to figure out, you know, should we send them for some type of, you know, diagnosis for that? Having someone that pre-tested for that, or that we could send them off to and could help along the process of getting them back without the long process that happens now. It's just, the process now, it's not a smooth transition to get them back into athletics. So, I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Anybody else? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Let's see, get down here. I think I just passed something there. Oh, right. Well, brings us to nominations for BOSI's board member. I don't know if everybody's read that thing. Anybody interested in being a BOSI's board member? Know anybody that wants to be?
I think Perry Sheldon is interested.
Yes, yes.
I don't hear him objecting.
No, I don't either.
I am terrified to miss a board meeting.
Okay, there are no, no nominations then. Let's move on. Motion for the consent agenda.
Please.
Second.
Any discussion there? We have two items in there. We have Lucille and Jay here, they're taking over new positions, leaving their old position, taking new ones. And I'm not sure whether I'm supposed to swear Jay in right now while the discussion part, or after, after we, I guess after we...
Hold it in.
After we vote. All right. All in favor? Oppose? Okay, so, I don't think it's an item on, is it an item on the, no. Yeah, well, just, just to make it official.
Yeah. Congratulations, Jay and Lucille.
If you could read this, hold your right hand up and, you know, yeah, yeah.
I, Joanna McQuillan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk on the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District from February 9th, 2017 through June 30th, 2017, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are now, we are now an official team. Or at least until June, anyway.
And Shelley Pospeach is with us tonight, and this, as you know, we're down a Director of HR and the Personnel Assistant, and this was the first personnel agenda that Shelley had to single-handedly put together. So, thank you, Shelley.
Okay. That brings us to special, I think, motion for special placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Dan?
I've reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented. I've reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And I have a motion for 11.2, the waiver of potential conflict of interest as designated in the agenda, please. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I don't, do you think we should clarify it? I mean, it's, it's, there's a, part of what the government's been pushing for is shared services, and the Hyde Park School District and the Hyde Park Town have a shared service program. They utilize our gasoline supply setup for savings on them, and we tap into their salt supplies for sanding and taking care of our school building grounds.
The explanation, Dan, is that previous to now, previous to now, we had a gentleman's agreement, and we just, but it wasn't formal. It's formalized it.
Formalizing it and...
This allows our attorney to create a document to formalize that this is the waiver of conflict because the town has the same attorney.
Same attorneys, right.
So once they, once we, once we, now that you've said that both parties can have the same attorney, most likely on the next agenda, you will see a, for a collaboration on that cost savings.
Okay.
And somebody's ensuring equitability between salt and oil, gas?
They don't mix.
I think we save money because we purchase for us and the town for both oil and salt.
One of the purchases that's safest money.
Does that answer the question?
Oh, I thought they were just using our oil.
No, 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 no.
We buy together.
Yeah, yeah. All right. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We have 11.3, a C-CUR Type II resolution. That would be for the North Park, yeah, for the North Park well. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And now for the 11.4, the actual well project resolution. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Linda, I think you're right. After nine o'clock, brain dead. May I have a motion for 11.5, the internal auditor agreement? A motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on there? All in favor? Thank you. Nobody opposed? Okay, we'll see how many people actually read the copy release through BOSI's. I have a motion for 11.6, the copy, copy or lease through BOSI's. A motion for that one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Anybody else concerned about the service cost than I was? I did get an answer on it, so I was, I was concerned about the...
I don't think I knew for that answer.
The, I was concerned about the $4,000 a month service, but it's not actually service. It's the cost per copy and overage. It's, it has to do with the amount of use of the things that were, and not actual service, service. I don't know why they call it service, but that was the explanation I got back from Rick. So any other discussion on that?
$4,000 in copies?
Yeah.
Actual?
Yeah. It has to do with, I could bring up my email that I got from Rick, but it was, it had to do with the number of copies. There's a limit, and how much you use, and based on how much we use, that was what the cost was.
This is because the reproduction printers and stuff we use are on lease?
Yeah.
Part of the lease contract limits this.
All right. All in favor?
I'm assuming that that also includes things like toners, the way our leases also do, it's a part of that service is, you know, you can call and you can get the toners and you don't pay per toner cartridge that you're buying, as well as them coming out and servicing the machine. But it's all about the full use.
I was just concerned with the wording. It just didn't include everything. It didn't say what it actually did, but I got a decent explanation, I thought. So all in favor?
Thank you, Doc.
Oppose? Thank you. All right. Anybody that stayed? May I have a motion to enter public participation again?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Anybody want to extend this meeting any longer than it already is? No, we welcome, if you'd like to speak, please speak. All right. I have a motion to exit public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Good.
Just so everybody's not feeling so guilty about the time, don't forget that we got snowed out on February 9th. This is, so there's double the pride, double the presentations.
Oh, wait. I forgot something. You said pride, and I forgot something.
We did a lot of pride at the...
It is Mr. Midemeyer's birthday next month. And I wanted to make everybody know and wish him a happy birthday next week.
We're not going to be here.
I, I, listen, I got this calendar thing, it comes up and it says, Steve's got a birthday next week. I hope it's right.
I think we missed another pride. Didn't your coach get Coach of the Year?
Yes.
Yes. Doug forgot that one, and we, well, not Doug, Doug reminded me we forgot one.
For girls in Detroit.
Yeah. Coach Hollings.
Yeah.
Excellent, well-deserved, too. Okay. Any subcommittee reports? I mean, we added an audit committee meeting where we talked to the internal auditor and asked them to look at a few things, which he has already done. We'll be discussing that at the next meeting. Any other?
We had a technology subcommittee meeting. It was a long meeting in that we're working our way through a fairly old wish list. And it was a list that we made well before we understood the parameters of the current grant program, pardon, not a grant program.
Smart bond.
Thank you, the smart bond. And so, and the other, the other reason we're doing that is because we also narrowed down our goals that we want to use the Smart Gun money for. I'm bringing that up because basically what we're trying to use that money for is advancing our ability to educate the students, enrich their experiences, instead of doing things like replacing safety equipment or replacing existing infrastructure. So we're trying to use that to move the ball forward instead of staying in place or simply doing things for which there should already be money allocated. So we made a lot of progress, but the list is fairly large, and not everybody understood all of the items that were on the list. So it's a great conversation.
Lot of work.
We're, yeah, a lot more work to do.
Yeah. Well, you got a lot of money to spend, so it should take, it should take effort.
You start talking about technology, it's not that much work.
Any other, oh, you have health and safety.
The health and safety met. Eric did come and talk about Family ID, which he is hoping he'll bring to the board in May. This is actually automating the physicals and to get it online so that coaches can see it readily, parents can see it, and hopefully it'll be updated for even more stuff. And we look at our emergency contacts, and they'll go from school to school instead of, we, a parent have to filling it out. If you have kids in three different schools, you have to fill it out three times.
So when you, is this is a program that already exists, or something that's going to be developed?
It's a program that exists that they're looking at wanting to bring in. It's not expensive.
Okay.
It's really, it's not expensive. Because I asked that question.
All right. Any other committee?
Well, we had the district leadership team. It was probably the most exciting, productive, roll your sleeves up, really start to put the paint on the wall about potential capital projects. Again, this committee has students, a lot of community reps, a handful of parents. We had more, but hard getting some people there. But we've made a tremendous amount of progress. We are adding a meeting. A notice will go out for March 15th, more like an early evening meeting. That's already the date that the instructional team is meeting because the other side of our strategic planning committee is planning the professional development to move instruction in the four Cs forward. So we're doing both things simultaneously. So March 15th, we're going to look for a four to seven meeting to really continue to work on what we're going to present to the board, and to take the results of our analysis of the four or five scenarios and come up with some priorities, so.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Moving on to the Board of Education meeting calendar, which has changed for February and March, just to read them out. As you know, February 9th was canceled, the 23rd, that's tonight here, was changed to here at the middle school. The March 9th meeting will be at Violet Avenue Elementary, and the March 23rd will be at Netherwood. So if you look at the district calendar, that will be, have been updated. I don't know if we have the vote on this, but it's a...
I guess it's sort of a re-adoption.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so may I have a motion then for 14-2, Board of Education meeting calendar updates?
I move to adopt the calendar as adjusted.
Thank you.
Second.
May I have a second? Any discussion? Give me anyone, doesn't matter. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Okay. Here's the biggest item on the thing. The potential Board of Education candidates. Information packets are now available. So anybody out there wants to run for the board and have as much fun as we're having, then, no, no, Steve, you can't, you can't do that. No. Please see the district clerk, Jay here, and pick up a packet for, basically you have to get people that are willing to sign and say, yeah, you can go, you can run. This year you'll need 36 signatures, which is extremely low, and I'm really happy because I'm running, and as is Jeff, so. But anybody else who would like to run, and we encourage people to come out, so. Upcoming meetings, I just kind of went over. The next board meeting is at Violet Avenue School, March 9th, 7 o'clock. And it is a location change that is, it's different than what's on the current calendar, but that will be updated. Also, on the 3rd of March, is the District Steam Expo, 5 to 7, at FDR. There is no need to enter executive session, and in that case, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you all for sticking with us.